Well, Alec Sharp, thank you for being here today. I think the best place to start is to ask you what led you to run? And in particular, whether there was something that inspired this campaign as a result of what the school board did, or your own education in the district, or just what's behind your candidacy?
So it's one of those things where I've had a lot of problems with the district, and it's one of those things where I've kind of always thought, it's like, how hard can it be for some of these simple problems? And that I don't need to necessarily do everything, that's why there's multiple people on a board, and that I could help solve a lot of these issues that don't seem to be looked at or be spent effort on solving. And I was out for two quarters in the winter and spring for depression, and so I kind of just needed to get out and do something. And so I'm like, I'm gonna try and run, you know? Go out and do something, get active, you know? I have pretty strong opinions on a lot of these topics, having experienced a lot of the problems and issues, so.
So can you spell out some of those, the issues that you think aren't getting the attention they deserve, and what you would do about it?
I think they're getting a bit more attention now, but I think special education is a really big problem, where there's lots of things that aren't looked at, whether it's compliance, which is a little bit getting looked at, but we just have the Title IX Compliance Office, or whatever, that they've just set up. There doesn't seem like there's education on what the teachers should be required to provide. And so there's lots of things where I've had teachers just say, I don't care if you have this accommodation, I'm not gonna provide it.
Have you had that experience?
Yeah. Where I got all the answers right on a science test, or whatever, but because I didn't use proper sentences and had misspellings, I got docked a bunch of points and failed the test, even though in my IEP it says if it's not English, I don't need to worry about spelling and grammar. And the teacher's like, well, I don't care. And so it's those type of things where I think that teacher probably felt like they were in the right. And it's just a simple lack of education, which a teacher, or anyone in a profession, should know what they're required to do. And it's a certain level of professionalism. And I think this is an issue that's not really being addressed.
Without belaboring your own specific situation, I wonder if you could explain whether you were able to work this problem through and get it corrected?
Um.
And I mean, what was your experience when you felt that you weren't getting what you were supposed to have from the district?
A lot of times, it just kind of ends up with a long drawn-out fight that you might eventually win. So like, I wanted to audit AP Physics, because I was interested in the class, not for the AP test, or for the grade. And the teacher said it was okay, and everything was set up for me to take the class, and on 10:00 AM on the first day of school, we got a message saying that I wasn't allowed to take the class. And after my mom went to the district, finally after two and a half months, they declared that, yeah, I can take the class. But at that point, it's two and a half months into the school year, there is not, and they're like, well, you can do it online. And it's like, well, I don't really work well online classes. And so even though we ended up kind of winning that argument, you kind of won't lose in the end anyway. And so there's some things like that, or there's other things where you just kind of accept it. Where I had to drop out of Physics Honors, because the teacher wasn't cooperating and following the IEP. And we had multiple meetings with the teacher, and the teacher's like, okay, and then just wouldn't do anything, so I just dropped out of the class, because that's the easiest solution. And so that shouldn't have to happen.
One of the candidates in this race suggested the need for an ombudsman to, in part, I think, deal with this type of situation, where a frustrated student or parent doesn't feel that they're getting the response from the district. Is that a concept that you think is part of the solution?
What was the term you used?
Ombudsman?
Not familiar with that term.
That would be a person who is somewhat removed and independent of the administration, and who receives complaints about the way things were done, and investigates those complaints, and then sort of acts as an advocate for the parent or student, and tries to resolve the issue.
Yeah, I've been an advocate for third-party monitoring and investigations for most of the issues. And I think we only had the third-party investigation once the OCR got involved. And beside that, there's no third-party investigations, or monitoring, or whatever. And I know at least at Pally, how the instructional supervisor rotation system works, is that the teachers kind of rotate between being the instructional supervisor. So there's kind of a lack of incentive to pursue the failings of a teacher, if that teacher can potentially be the instructional supervisor in a couple of years.
Well, so earlier, you attributed some of this problem to lack of education of the teachers.
Yeah.
So you think it's sort of a mix, then?
Yeah.
Some teachers need the education, and other teachers are actually knowingly not fulfilling the requirements of the IPs.
And, yeah, so there needs to be, it's not just a simple thing. You can't just do one thing to fix the problem. You need to have education, which is important, because without education, how are people supposed to know what they're supposed to do? And then after you have education, you should have some sort of system of accountability, and make sure that they're following through with what they're required to do. And if they're not, there needs to be some sort of system of punishment, or of reform to get the teachers to actually comply.
You use the words "long drawn-out fight," which I think a lot of special ed families probably share that feeling of this adversarial relationship with the district, which often happens when they're just trying to get services for their children. What is the number-one step you think the district should take to rebuild trust with special education families, and sort of reverse that perception that there's this adversarial approach?
I think a big step is to listen to the community, to go out and listen to what the problems are, and to look into it. Because a lot of times, it's like, someone brings forward a problem, and it's like, okay, well, look into that, and nothing happens. And I think it's, you have to earn trust through action. And I think the most important thing is to do what you say you're going to do. And that seems to be hard, which I don't understand how it's hard.
There's a feeling that the school district essentially wants to litigate against special ed families, that that's a position that the district is taking. What are your thoughts on the legal expenses of the district, especially when it comes to working with families?
I think it's one of those things that if someone has a complaint and has a valid lawsuit, I don't understand what the point of fighting it is, because all you're doing is wasting taxpayer money, wasting time, and pushing aside the problem. And if you, because basically litigation is just trying to make it go away. If you make the problem go away, you're not fixing it. And so I think this is a big issue that the school district doesn't understand, is that if there's a problem, you need to address it and fix it. Otherwise, nothing's gonna get better, and things are just gonna repeat.
Is the time period that you base your opinions on a couple of years ago, what time? Because we've had so much change in district administration.
So I'd say, so I graduated in 2015, so kind of, I got my IEP in fifth grade, because I had problems with my teacher in fourth grade. And so I had some problems there, and then I'd say kind of throughout middle school and high school.
And so your observations of the district, your personal experience ended in 2015?
Yeah, but my mom is, was a special ed parent representative for me, and she's been helping some of her friends as well, and so one of their kids just graduated this last year, and she was going to IEP meetings, and has been talking about some of those events as well. So I'm kind of familiar with all the way up to last year as well.
Yeah, the purpose of my question is that there's been so much change. We've had, we've had two superintendents, we've obviously had a lot of staff changing below that level, but we've also had the benefit of these very detailed OCR investigations and outside legal investigations that have, I think, those in positions now would argue have substantially changed the way the district approaches these issues. I gather from your comments, you're skeptical of that, but do you?
Well, it's one of the things where I think changing personnel is good, but it's only a start, that you need to, with the new personnel, look into the old problems. And we've fixed some problems, maybe, I'm not 100% sure on how effective they are, because with like, the Wellness Center at Pally, from what I've heard, is that it's mainly used by white girls, and that the underrepresented are not getting access for whatever reason. And so if we introduce something, and it's not doing what it's intended to do, you need to look at why isn't it doing that, as opposed to, well, we have this here now. And so this is kind of a problem that the district has, where they introduce a solution or something, but they don't necessarily check to see how well it's working, or whether it's doing what it's supposed to do. And you need to set specific goals that need to be followed thoroughly and checked. And if it's not meeting the goals, you need to investigate why and fix it.
You just mentioned the Wellness Center, and I wanted to ask you about student well-being and student mental health. Are there things that you think have improved over this last decade?
Um, I'd think the counselors have gotten better. I'm not so sure, because I don't, I haven't used the school counselors since probably seventh or eighth grade, when my counselor breached trust. And so back then, it was the ACS, I think, and they were using interns and trainees and stuff. And it's one of those things where if you're providing a service, look at why you're providing the service. If you're trying to provide mental health support, do you want to provide support from a professional, or do you want the school to be a training place for interns? And it's just about priorities.
So your experience was not positive with ACS?
No.
What steps do you think the school district needs to take at this point to improve on well-being?
So I think teacher advocates are really important, that the teachers in your classes are going to be very familiar with you. And from talking to some teachers, I was talking to Ms. Filpo, who is one of my examples that I use a lot, because the literature in school is really depressing, and so she spent a lot of effort to create comedy literature. And so this is something that I really appreciated, and it was a great class. And she was talking about how the teachers are very connected to the students and the problems, and that there are some teachers that the teacher advocates are going to be doing more than necessarily the Wellness Centers are, and that the students are probably more willing to go to the teachers that they are familiar with than someone completely new in a Wellness Center.
So you think greater support for these teacher advocates needs to be given?
Yeah, and another thing as well is that apparently we used to have some sort of one-time grant, or whatever, for teacher excellency, for teachers who performed exemplary. They would get $5,000 or whatever, as kind of a bonus for being really good, and they got rid of that some number of years ago. And that, it doesn't seem like teachers are recognized for kind of going above and beyond and helping people. And I think this is a really big problem, because if with the union, all the teacher pay gets advanced at a equal rate, right? That if you have a pay raise, it needs to be all teachers. And I think the problem with this is that, like in any job, you have good employees and bad employees, or exemplary employees that you give a bonus to, to encourage them. And if there's no system like that, how can you expect your teachers to be exemplary?
So at the school board debate last week, you answered pretty honestly when there was a question that you weren't intimately familiar with, including weighted grades and the achievement gap. So acknowledging that you haven't been closely involved with district and board issues over the last several years, what do you bring to the table as a candidate and as a potential trustee?
Well, I think there are some things that I might not necessarily be familiar with right away, but I think that's why we have a two-meeting rule, is that you get public input, and you can research, and kind of look into it. And I'm assuming as a board member, I would get the material well ahead of the board meetings, compared to other people, and that I would have time to research it. And I think it's important to research a material before you talk about it, which doesn't necessarily seem to happen. And I think one of the things that I bring is availability, in that I'm only taking one class at Foothill this semester to work on campaigning, and I think if I win the election, I would probably take one class a semester, and that I'm okay with pushing back finishing school to invest time into this for something that I would be doing, because I want to do it well.
Have you been at Foothill since graduating in 18?
In.
Is that what you've been doing?
So I took a gap year, kind of focusing on health, kind of finding somewhere to work out, because I have bad knees and bad back and stuff, and so kind of finding a trainer to work with, and some other stuff for mental health, and so, but after that, I've been at Foothill.
And are you studying to do something in particular, besides serve on the school board?
No, I don't, I don't really have a major or anything, I'm not really, kind of with the depression, I kind of have like, a lack of interest. Just kind of not interested in seeing stuff traveling, or not interested in sports. I mean, I used to play sports a lot, but then I got injured, and I just kind of lost interest. And a lot of that is kind of, I don't necessarily have a major that I'm looking at, because I'm not necessarily interested. And so I think this is going out and doing something. I might find something I'm interested, I might not, but it's a good experience, while I don't know what I'm doing.
One of the concerns of teachers is the cost of housing around here. And so the county has suggested that there be a housing complex for teachers here in Palo Alto, but they're asking each of the districts in the area to give 100, sorry, $600,000, I believe Foothill-Diaz has already agreed to that. So do you think spending $600,000 for teacher housing is wise for Palo Alto?
Yeah, I think it's, there's kind of two options that people are looking at. You have investing money directly in housing, or providing some sort of financial housing cost in a salary bonus. That's kind of the two options that people are looking at, for a solution to this problem of housing. And I think spending the money as a governing body into a specific solution is going to be much more cost-effective than just kind of blanket tossing out money to the individual teachers. So I think money-wise, it's much better to do a long-term investment in building up infrastructure.
The city of Palo Alto is discussing some ways to make their labor negotiations more transparent, including sunshining the proposals and counter-proposals. Would you support something similar for the school district in its negotiations with the teachers and classified unions?
Um, I think, I don't really know the implications of this problem, and what would be beneficial or detrimental, but I think generally, we already have the information publicly on what teacher salaries are, so I don't think that's that big of a step away.
But the negotiations themselves are closed.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, is that the salaries are already public information, so I don't think revealing the negotiations would be that much different. I don't, I'm not necessarily sure, but.
Let me give you an example from the last go-around, when the, unbeknownst to the public, the district negotiated a three-year contract with teachers, instead of the long, traditional, one-year contract. And regardless of the merits of that, it didn't turn out too well because of other budget issues. But regardless of the merits of that, that's an example of a very major change, that the public had no insight into what was happening until it had already been approved by the school board. And the hearing that was held, as required by law, was really just a formality. I think that's what Elena's question is getting at, is, you know, is there a way to expose more of this?
Yeah, I think that's good, because I think one of the problems with the board meetings that I've attended so far, is it's kind of like you described, it's a public hearing for show, that they kind of have their decisions, and they just let the public talk, but they don't necessarily take the input. And they already kind of have what they decide on beforehand that they're going to do. So I'm all for getting people introduced to the problem earlier, so that they can have a bigger impact.
Have you had the opportunity to follow the board's deliberations, and sort of how they, how they've handled themselves, more than just the last few months? I'm wondering about how long a perspective you have.
So, I know my mom attended a bunch of board meetings a couple of years ago, and so I can kind of draw on that experience a bit. I know, I, my mom's talked with Todd, because he's our neighbor across the street, and so I think one of his big things is time, not extending the meetings over, keeping things on track, and that it just seems like time is not spent well, whether, like, for the ad hoc committee, I mean, there needs to be a certain time cap on an important scale, that this item is not necessarily worth spending an hour on. In 15 minutes, half an hour, there needs to be some sort of cap, that if there's no resolution, it just fails automatically after a certain amount of time. And it doesn't seem like there's any sort of system like that, it doesn't seem like there's any care for that.
It's kind of hard when you've got elected officials who basically have the right to speak. I mean, you're talking about like, a policy that somebody would get to decide what a particular agenda item was worth, in terms of time?
Well, what I'm saying is, it's like, the ad hoc committee, for example, they are already individually advising the superintendent.
This is for the benefit of those not familiar, this is the ad hoc committee to advise a superintendent on Stanford-related matters pertaining to their general use permit.
Yeah, so they, the board members were individually consulting with the superintendent, and they wanted to form a committee of two people. And so you kind of maybe set some agreed-upon, in the closed meeting ahead of time, on how important it is. What would happen if no resolution is met? And kind of, given that, how much time do you want to give it? And with the ad hoc committee, if nothing happened, in the end, they're still going to be consulting with the superintendent, just not in group, in a group of two. So I think this is all about priorities, is you have to set a priority on an agenda. And that, talking about the, I think that was the same meeting that they were talking about, the implementation of what was required by the OCR, right? In the beginning, with the policy update, the memo of understanding, I think, and...
The police department memo.
Yeah. I think they spent less time on that than they did on the ad hoc committee. And for me, I think prioritizing time compared to how important something is, is a needed step.
One of the things the board has experimented with, in order to keep their meetings running closer to on-time, is limiting public comment if there's, I forget the threshold, but you know, over 15 or 20 speakers, it goes down to two minutes, and even down to one minute if there's X number of speakers. Do you agree with that practice, or are you worried that that's limiting public comment?
I think that it is limiting public comment, but at the same time, you don't necessarily want to extend the meeting for how, how long it's going to take. So it's kind of hard to find a balance between those two. And so I think maybe you have some sort of system where people can address for a minute in front of the board, talking, and maybe give them an opportunity to write something in more detail for them to collect later. That there's a two-meeting rule, they're addressing something, and people are commenting, they have a minute to speak if there's too many people, maybe they have a card, a certain size card that they can write on, as a follow-up to that.
You've mentioned the two-meeting rule a couple of times, obviously supporting it. Do you, the two-meeting rule is a total creation of this school district, you know?
And it's a good creation.
And so I'm wondering, the critics of it, including some current board members who are trying to experiment with more liberally suspending the two-meeting rule, argue that there are too many issues that really don't rise to the level of needing to be again on the agenda, and that it really is bogging down the process to no particular benefit to the public. Do you see any merit to that argument at all? Or do you feel like you just aren't sure how that judgment would be made about which items?
I think it's one of those things that they arbitrarily decide what they think is important or not. And so I think that isn't fair to the public, because what the board... And so I think that isn't fair to the public, because what the board decides isn't important. Like the solar might have a lot of public comments. And so I think this is one of the things where. Giving people an opportunity to talk is not going to be bad. And if there's not, if the item isn't important, then people aren't going to talk and it's not going to be a problem. But if it is important, then there will be people talking, which signifies that it is important that it was going to be talked about. So I don't see any problem with this.
Uh, so one of the issues that came before uh the school board was the renaming of the schools, of course, is controversial at the very beginning. And then they proceeded to have the committees. Um, and then it became controversial again because of the, one of the names that was chosen, uh Frank Yamamoto. Do you agree with how the school board handled the issue?
I think it's one of those things where whether you are on one side or the other. You have to look at the fact that, is this the highest priority that the school district and the board can deal with? Is this the most important thing above mental health, above academics? Above how students aren't necessarily able to attend. Higher education in the APs if they're from a minority. It's like. A big percentage of the population that is from a minority is not going to get into an AP. And so these are much more important issues that the time could be spent on. And so personally, I think. If you're going to rename the schools, rename it to a neutral term so that this issue won't ever happen again. There's plenty of schools like Creekside or something like that, that you're never going to have this problem again. And. In the first place, i- it doesn't seem like a worthwhile problem to investigate. So not having the problem come up again is a good idea.
So you, you think the school board should have sort of foreseen what could have happened and?
Well, I think it's one of those things where priorities, it's all about the priorities. And that. Is this the highest priority? And it kind of seemed like it was, cause that was the big topic. And. I personally don't find it to be very important. Is it going to have a significant impact on the day-to-day life of the students? Probably not.
Okay, so there you have a situation where you as a board member don't think it's very important. But by the number of people that turn out to the room, it seems like it is important.
I'm not saying it's not important. What I'm saying is, is it the most important?
I, I understand, but so how do you resolve that conflict? Because this board spent an enormous amount of time.
Yeah.
On this topic. So was that the right call to have made? Or would it have, would you have supported a discussion at the front end of that that concluded? You know, this isn't the most important thing for us to spend our time on, let's not do that.
I think it's one of those things where having a discussion about how important it is. And that you can get both sides' opinions and discuss about. The ideas, but I think. Refining those ideas and getting everything set up doesn't need to happen in successive board meetings. It can happen outside of the board. And then when things have kind of, when both sides or parties have kind of come up with their suggestions and ideas. It can be re-brought up to the board.
That's pretty much what happened in this, in this situation. It's just that there was, there was a group of people in the community that were very um motivated to bring about this, this change.
Yeah, and, and um by that token, you have a large group of people, going to your point earlier. Like if there are a lot of people who want to talk about a topic, then maybe it's more important than the board thinks it is. And maybe it should be elevated.
Yeah, but I think my opinion on it is visible impact on the student's life. And that things like access to mental health, decreasing classroom size. Um, increasing resources to people in low-income families. These are things that are going to have a significant impact on the student's quality of life. Whereas I don't think the name of a school, it might have some impact and you might need to look at that. But it seems like a lot of these other issues are ignored while this one is brought to the forefront. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't talk about it. I'm just saying if we're talking about this, why aren't we talking about more important things as well?
You know, another example of an issue that sort of took on a life of its own was the sex ed curriculum. I don't know if you were um watching these board meetings that occurred. But you had huge outpouring of parents concerned about the sex ed curriculum that was being.
What was the problem with it? Was it too young or they're introducing it to too young people or?
It had to do with the nature of the curriculum at the different age levels, basically. So there was, the state has imposed certain requirements and the district had. Uh, employed a consultant to, and, and used the curriculum developed by an outside organization. And as this got publicized, there were a group of parents that objected to. Their younger children being exposed to some of that curriculum. But I, I don't want you to try to opine on it without knowing all the details, so.
Well, I think one of the things is that. It's a big, I think that's more of a political debate about parents' rights versus. Educational rights that is much bigger scaled in the district about fighting whether. The parents have the rights to not have their kids educated by the required education.
Yeah, and, and by law, they're given that right, so they can choose to have their students not participate in these.
But I think the problem arises when. They try and force it back. It's fine for them to individually not participate, that's their right. But I think. If it's a law or it's a rule to provide this education, or if this education is important, like Sex Ed, is very important. Then even if you don't necessarily agree and you opt out, why are you trying to force other people to not have this opportunity?
I wanted to ask you quickly about weighted GPA. I'm curious if you support the practice of reporting weighted GPAs for high schoolers. Um, and if you are concerned at all about its impact on student mental health and balance.
It's a complicated issue. I think since the UCs are. Looking at weighted GPA and a UC is a really good path for a lot of the students. I think having it is a good option there, cause I think providing people with multiple options is good. And so for that sense, I think it's good to have a weighted GPA. But I'm not as informed about its impact on mental health. And like what was brought up with the weighted GPA causing classes to not be full. I think. That's something to look at to review whether or not it's overall beneficial or not. And then I think another thing as well to look at not having enough people in the classes is classroom size. If you're requiring thirty to thirty-five students to make up a class and you only have twenty students. Is it okay to have a twenty-student class? I think that's fine, but it might not meet requirements or it might not be what the school district is going to provide. So.
Well, in theory, if you have a twenty-student class, you're gonna have a class someplace that's got thirty-eight or thirty-nine students in it. Because of the targeted average size of class that has to be achieved.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying about looking at class sizes. Is that if you're, if this is a problem where. You're having only twenty kids show up for a class. Is that really too small of a class to provide? And that's kind of looking at, how big are the classes and how big should they be? So that's a kind of a different issue, but it's kind of related.
Uh, voters will be weighing in on term limits uh for the school board this November. Uh, do you see a problem currently with um school board members not facing any term limits and being able to serve repeatedly?
Um. I think. It's okay. I think. They have to be re-elected every time, so they have to get the vote every time to be re-elected. So it's not like the Supreme Court or something like that, where they, once they get in, they're in for life. They still have to be re-elected every time. And I think for House of Representatives and other stuff like that, I don't think there's term limits. Or if there are, they're really high.
There are no federal term limits. It's all at a state and local level.
So I think I don't see any problem with that. And if someone has a lot of experience. That's all the more better for the district if they can use that experience to help, so.
We're running out of time, but just maybe a couple of quick questions. Um, do you support the hiring of a general counsel to?
I think in general, yes, but with the requirements for the job that the school has provided. I think it's insufficient to provide a good general counsel. And so I think I want a general counsel that can educate people on what is required, kind of like what I talked about earlier. Of what they're legally obligated to do. And if you hire someone that doesn't have education background in legal work. They might not be able to provide this information. They can look it up and they can provide some advice based on a district level. On compliant, Title IX compliance and some other stuff like that. But I think you need someone who's experienced in the field to provide a good counsel.
So for you, it's a matter of getting the right person, but it's a job that you would like to see, Phil.
Yeah, I think it's important, but it's also important to have a qualified individual.
Yeah, yeah. The other question I wanted to ask about is this recent threat of litigation. If the district does not shift to district elections. Where instead of being elected at large, board members would run in a geographic district. For example, that would prevent uh two people from living in Bear Park, serving on the school board. Is that, if, if you had been on the board as now, which is, the district is now dealing with this threat. What would your steps be?
Well, I think first thing is if they're looking for a legal thing, you have to look at what is legally obligated. And are they legally obligated to provide this district voting? And if not, would it be beneficial? And.
And what do you think?
I don't necessarily think it's beneficial. I think people are going to have different experiences, whether they live in the same district or whether they live in different districts. And it's kind of based on your experiences in school. And so I think saying just because you live somewhere with the same district as another candidate. You have the same perspective as them is kind of naive.
Any other final questions? Okay, Alex Sharf, thank you very much for joining us today.